This is our third debate in Congress so far. And the place has been very well attended and we've had a good time. And I'm really excited about our place. Then I want to introduce our two folks who will be asking the questions tonight. And then it's the President of Republicans, Andrew Nambal. And then the Treasurer of the Republican Party, Laurie Austin. First of all, I'd like to introduce our candidates tonight. First is Melanie Creaven. Brad Mills. Rob Walter. And then I would like to welcome our Tom Rolle. He's wearing his helmet.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm Tom Dass. I've served 14 years on the executive committee. I've really enjoyed it, but I'm kind of bald at this job. I'm also the Chairman of the Scholarship Committee. We give out a couple thousand dollars to seniors headed off of college. And that's also a lot of fun. But tonight, I'm going to tell my timer. When a speaker has only three seconds left, they'll see this sign. And when the time is up, they'll see this sign. And that means stop. It means five more seconds, 10 more seconds. If five or 10 seconds is over, I'll turn around to the audience. And you will read the sign and you will say...
Stop.
Very good. Let's have a good meeting tonight. Thank you for coming.
So the start will go from right to left. You can have a vote if I go from left to right. So my first one will be Rob Walter for introduction. And you can come up to the mic for your introduction.
Good evening. I'm Rob Walter. First, I'd really like to thank those of you that have taken the time to come out tonight and have invested in the outcome of the school board election because this local elections matter. For those who have come out for all three events, their interest in seeing good Republican representation in the way this speaks by. I'm blessed to actually be the first time in Congress running for reelection in the school board. Many of you have voted for me in the past and for that support of the school administration. I'm known as a board member who is prepared. I'll ask difficult questions. I insist on transparency. I hold conservative Christian values and have a consistent voting record that is helpful to the school system, our students, family, and community. I bring apparent perspectives before with one on one. My oldest had a graduate and one more still in the school system. I've got leadership experience and I can work respectfully with other board members and staff to get things done. I will stand on, I will love if I have to, because if it's the right thing to do, but it would be much more effective if we had a team of like-minded people on the board with just one additional supportive vote to make a difference, like say, in a small community school. The good news is we've got two big candidates running from the primary. But the decision is, your vote is so important to determine who of us needs to go forward. Which time do we have left? Thirty seconds. Really, I think we have great candidates. Craig is going to all our school board meetings. He stays until after the close session in case something off camera is voted on and summarizes that. Catherine's got no more experience, has more experience than any of us, especially the issue students. That's appreciated. Millie holds conservative values that are still on my own and I appreciate her support of the arts as well. Amanda's a great mom of the school, so does kids in the school system that support, shares her concerns. And publicly has an awesome family. He's the next generation where I was twelve years ago. And I appreciate him stepping in and walking the path.
Next up is Melanie Creaven.
Good evening. I'm super pumped about tonight. I ran the school board in 2022, or 2020, 2022. In forms like this, one of my favorite part of the process because I've loved talking about our Cabarrus County schools. I'm Brad Mills. I've been in Cabarrus County since the first grade. I graduated in Central Cabarrus High School. That's also where I met my wife. I have two, we have two daughters. Both graduated from Mount Pleasant High School. My youngest had a senior year cut short by the pandemic. She's now a bi elementary major at the UCC. And she intends to be a high school teacher. My wife has tried to talk her out of it. My wife's been a public school teacher for 25 years. She knows what my daughter is signing on for. There are a lot of reasons to run for a seat on the school and board of education. For me, it's very personal. I've seen how programs and mandates flow down from Washington DC and Raleigh, 4401 whole air pro road. Do you feel like they've improved the quality of education for your children? Public schools exist to make sure that every child has access to American dream. They should be preparing them to succeed in the workforce and post-secondary education. And public schools exist to make sure that the electorate has the critical thinking skills necessary to participate in our American representative democracy. For three years now, I've been talking to parents and teachers. I've been going to community meetings. I was substitute teaching at a middle school last week. I've been listening and I've been sharing. And I'm looking forward to sharing it through tonight. You can't go wrong with any of the Republicans on the stage. Couple of them know more about this job than I do. I don't think there's four of them. And so that's my job and I as well convince you to vote me in the Capitol. Thank you for coming out.
Next up is Melanie Creaven.
Thank you all for being here. Education has become ground zeroes for the political grooming of our children. At a recent school board meeting, the number one goal for schools was shifted from education to health. We spend 58% of the state's budget on education and have very little to show for it. New schools are continually five years behind the need. Literacy rates are ridiculously low. And a high school diploma for most in a few years won't be sufficient to help them with their elementary child's math homework. There is not a school board in existence that would admit to being subpar, much less broken. While our children continue to perform below grade level and behave horribly in the classrooms, we continue to tout we have the best schools and people want to move here for our schools. Why then do we have trouble hiring and retaining teachers? Why are the schools worried about mass exodus to private open homeschools for the new opportunity scholarships? The first step to fixing a problem is admitting you have one. In Houston, we have a problem. Parents have a right to expect their child to graduate with the ability to pursue a career, enter the workforce, and provide for a family. We spend too much time turning them into politically correct robots who feel and think the way the government wants them to. The majority don't have the learning skills for reading and comprehension required in the job, the math skills to handle their own finances, and the ability to write. I'm running for school board because I believe God has called me to use my experience to help others. I have taught in public schools, was adjunct faculty member for Wagner Web for 25 years. I taught my own children learning skills. They have used these skills in college, in their own businesses, working in the private sector, and some even to teach. America has fallen from number one in education in the world to 35. It's time to do more than lose the needle. Thank you.
Next up is Catherine Bonnsmore. I'd like to first thank all of you and everyone on this stage for sharing my passion for children in our schools. I am Catherine Bonnsmore. I grew up right down the road from here on a farm. I still live on the farm. In fact, I live in the house my great-grandfather built. At one time, my father was one of the largest farmers in Cabarrus County. We still operate the farm. My brother operated with the help of my mother and myself. My mother's a graduate of Mount Pleasant. She's a retired health occupation teacher from Concord High School. I'm a Northwest graduate. Both of my kids graduated from Robinson High School. And my first job was at the school best rival of the Northwest. I knew I wanted to be a teacher. So I went to Blatchon, got a teaching certificate, and a master's in counselor education. That's why I'm a technology element for ACT. I was fortunate enough to return back home and was one of the first six elementary guidance counselors hired here in the county to start the elementary guidance programs in our schools. I've worked at seven different schools here in the county. I taught anywhere from kindergarten to high school math and summer school. I've worked under the leadership of seven different superintendents. Five of those superintendents I served as a teacher representative on their leadership teams. I was school improvement team chairman for 10 years at Oakdale. I have recently retired with 35 years of experience in education. I have seen the struggles of what parents and teachers have come through to get the help of their children. So last January, I bought an office space in Long Island Plaza. And I go through my own business, More advocacy for children. My goal there is to empower parents for what their rights are in asking for help with their children. They are the best advocate for their children. Again, Catherine Bonnsmore, and I hope to win your support tonight.
Next up is Vova Hartzell.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you everybody for putting this on, and this given opportunity. Be careful. My name is Vova Hartzell. I'm a Christian, husband, father, coach, leader, patron. I'm a Cabarrus County native. Graduated from Northwest Cabarrus. My children, I have two children, attend Cabarrus County Schools and Mount Pleasant School District. My wife works at Mount Pleasant Elementary, an impact program. I currently work in Conover City Schools where I am an instructional assistant and behavioral specialist. And I'm currently in a teaching role for the rest of the school year. And I teach fourth and fifth grade autistic children and the exceptional children. I also serve a leadership team at Shady Elementary. I've coached in Cabarrus County Schools football and wrestling for 12 years. I recently gave it up this past year to focus on other things. I bring conservative values and common sense to this board. And that's why I'm running. I'm currently the only candidate running that currently works in a school. I'm in a school every day, in a classroom every day. Thank you.
The first question is for Mr. Mills. Laws passed by the General Assembly increasingly define what happens in a school district. If and when the state proposes or passes policies that the local school board collectively agrees are contrary to the interests and values of our community, what actions are you willing to take to uphold the values of the community?
I love this conversation, this question, because it comes up quite a bit. And I think we just had this conversation in the lobby a few minutes ago. I think, as I said in my opening remarks, we get a lot of stuff that comes down from Raleigh, comes down from Washington DC. And over the decades, it's created an undue burden on our teachers and it's made them ineffective at the areas of expertise that they have, to the role of teaching homes, things that they're trained in. And so we see, we have a precedent here in Cabarrus County where the school board decided that they wanted us to move the county back. And the state also said that they couldn't, we'll have to start on a certain day. And so we decided to make it up. The board has made that decision, went forward with it, and don't think of the consequences that have been to us. I think that every time we look at these policies that are coming down from above, we just really have to talk to our attorneys to figure out what the legal liabilities are. But definitely we have to be looking for opportunities to sort of test the state's resolve when they're passing this stuff down to us. Because I think that as a board, we need to reclaim some of our own authority to make decisions for our own children in the school district.
This next question is for Vova Hartzell. Once known as a lateral entry license, North Carolina now uses a residency license to bring non-certified individuals into the classroom to fill educator vacancies through the Pathways to Excellence Program. Do you agree with using the Pathways Program to fill educator and staff vacancies? And what other methods can the board, working with the superintendent, use to fill teaching and staff vacancies?
I do agree with the new protocol. It's a program. There's, I believe, five steps, different ways now that you can become a teacher. And through, it used to be called lateral entry, but they just made it fancy now, get it back. Locally, we struggle filling positions. I believe as of yesterday, there are over 200 vacancies in Cabarrus County Schools, a lot of teaching positions, a lot of support staff. And that affects everybody, students, staff, post-studying, administrators, daily teacher. I'm currently in a role teaching. I'm not licensed teacher, but I am a teacher for the rest of the school year. And a different district, but every district has the same issues right now of education. A lot of it's brought up by the state, and that has to change.
I believe it's a good idea to use, to use experienced people in their fields. That is one of the roles that I have a field of, that are aware that I was experienced in my field. So why not use their expertise in the classroom? The thing that their lateral move is about is to teach them how to handle a classroom. Maybe people have not actually taught them. But we do need this resource for our students and people that are in the field and they can, they can actually impart their knowledge in some things. And we just definitely need that.
Yeah, I'll just add too, that I also approve of the residency licensure program. And that's actually what we suggested for my daughter. So as I said, she's studying in the state, she wants to be a teacher, which is actually a biology major. That is the deal we made of her. We didn't want her to have, to be an education major, because then if school didn't work out for her, she would, she would be in a position where she had a degree, it would be difficult for her to transition into another degree. So we advised her to get a biology degree and then go residency licensure into the teaching position. I was also in charter school about a month ago. It's a trade high school. One of the things that charter schools have is have a new set of rules regarding the number of licensed teachers that they have on staff. Makes great sense for a charter school, if you bring in somebody that's relevant, doesn't necessarily have an education. So we need to think creatively about all the different ways to appropriate a profession and equip the diversity of job.
Next question is for Melanie Creaven. Across the country, school districts have used in-school surveys to collect data from children by asking students to share personal behavior, lifestyle, values and attitudes, state and mental health, sexuality, religious beliefs, not only of the students, but of their families and friends as well. Advocates call these surveys routine mental and behavioral risk assessments. Do you want limits on these kinds of surveys? And if so, how can the school system screen adverse students so that they receive necessary services and not provided by their parents or guardians?
Well, first of all, I've been in the classroom, and you just let me tell you that if you're a teacher and you have, are any kind of a teacher at home, you know your class within a few weeks or so, you spotted the person who has a problem. And you kind of keep an eye on it. The surveys are nothing more than a government intrusion into your home. And they do not serve any purpose whatsoever. So we're spending a lot of time with these surveys. And the biggest thing is that you, as a parent, have to opt out. You're considered in until you opt out. I don't like that at all. It should be, you should opt in, not opt out.
Yeah, I think we have actually had some opt-inists now for these surveys. For one of these, these questions, they change, or doesn't even know about this stuff. And it's wrong. It's clearly those type of things in our schools, things that we need to know as a board so we can react to and get out of our system. Does nobody, does anybody know? There are rules. And now with the COVID laws, they have crazy surveys they're asking to answer as well. I don't figure if we'll bring my child or something. But no, I think it is absolutely very important, the other stuff that we have taken, these parent qualifications, the parents can see these surveys, ask to the student now online prior to, those surveys going out, before that did happen. Well, I'm just beginning, but I do want to jump in on this one. I want to be very clear that one of our primary goals is just to get all the excess stuff out of the school system. There is a very finite thing in our school system we need to do. It's two things that I have on to say again. We've got to make sure that we have an educated citizenry that can participate in our democracy. And we have to make sure that they're prepared to be successful in the market with that against post-secondary education or going into a new career. Those are the things that we need to be preparing consistently. And I want to cut out anything else that isn't true to that. So whether it's unnecessary surveys, unnecessary testing, whether it's 15 minutes here for SEL, 15 minutes here for something else, or to give the classroom time back to the teachers so they can get a better balance from our students.
This next question is for Catherine Bonnsmore. As you know from experience in the classroom, clear communication between educators and parents is key to building strong partnership and trust in the school system. When considering the needs of students with disabilities, whether physical or developmental, how would you recommend the board solicit feedback from parents and students? And how would you ensure that parental involvement is prioritized?
Well, first of all, I'm not sure how you can help a child with a learning disability without parent involvement. No one knows a child better than the parent. So we've got to listen, and the communication comes, we've got to listen to the parents to say, because we as educators don't know the struggles that go on at home. What we may see at school may be what may not be what they see at home. So we've got to listen to the parents. It seems like our schools are becoming, or our students are becoming daddies. I've been several meetings in the last year, and I hear numbers, numbers, numbers. This child this, this child that, this number here, this number, we showed progress, but we're not rateable. And I have to stop and say, can we talk about the whole child? And that's what we've got to do. We've got to look at the whole child, work samples, what's going on with this child? And it's also important to look at teacher-child personality. That was one of my jobs as a counselor, is parent and the right teacher, teaching style with the right child, because every child has a different learning style. So it starts there in that classroom, and it starts with that teacher. But yes, we've got to have the parent involvement to be successful with this child.
The next question is for Rob Walter. One of the board's long-term goals is to focus on improving student performance at Title I schools to ensure that all children meet state academic content and student academic achievement standards. Six of the seven worst performing schools in the 2022 to 2023 state test scores were Title I schools. What changes does the school system need to make in order to meet the challenges of these schools?
Yeah, thinking about that, flexibility is something that's important, I would think, for our Title I schools. We do give them extra money, they do have opportunities to bring in more tutors and opportunities to bring in more educational staff, more resources. But that's really not enough, and maybe be flexible in the spending on, spending parent hour stuff, stuff of that nature. And it's the testing factor. I have two questions. Everybody's taking the same, same test, this test, or not geared towards some of these students. If you're a non-English farmer, non-English speaker, trying to take an English test, you're not going to do that vote. And that really doesn't gauge necessarily how well a student is. But there are lots of the reasons there are money that, as we as a board, takes extra money for those schools to get resources, and then you can do that, so you're just doing a student allocation.
You could hear them around the dinner table, not in a big room.
One of my biggest issues is teaching the basic learning skills. We spend a lot of time coming out with special programs, this and special programs that. And we don't address the actual need to be able to do and learn. We have put these screens in all the classrooms, and that is probably the worst learning tool for an early starter that you could do. Anybody can tell you, the research shows, these children don't need to be on screens. The last thing you need to have in a kindergarten, first grade classroom is a screen. So they need the tactile skills of writing, and that is also another neuropathic way to the brain for learning. This plugging away on a keyboard feels the same for everything you do. And quite frankly, odds are pretty good you'll get something right. There's only a limited amount of keys that you can push. So we need to get them off the screens, and we need to be teaching them hands-on things. And I believe we see a great improvement in them.
This next question is for Ms. Amanda Wharton. Your campaign website tells voters that the Cabarrus County School Board lacks accountability and does not manage its budget. Please give examples of these deficiencies and your plans to address them.
Anybody like to answer Amanda's question?
That was a question. That's missing. It should have been eliminated.
It's a big budget. This is over $90,000 of your local money, not the state, state and federal. Before, it was always, since I've been on board, it was always continuation and then expansion, continuation, expansion. And I fought, fought against that. And now we listen to it, preserve it, base budgets, we'll look at everything from ground up. We've never done that before, like that setting, assume. But there's more to it, and it's clearly the order that there's, there's, because again, it is wasteful spending. Somebody, somebody believes it's not. And they really need to justify it instead of just add there, say, pay us, it's necessary. And we just want to go see that. We don't take that presentation, get the bigger, bigger issue. We get to see necessarily all the details unless we actually have to ask for it. So that's something that we all, as a board, need staff to go. Since we're really looking for right of state information, making better decisions. And then we can allocate that to our staff committees, we have our reach and the resources we can put to, to get it in the classroom for the teaching. we can put to get it in the classroom or the teaching. Just to hear the teachers are buying those supplies, that's what happens. We can afford it, we can afford it.
Well, before you can understand the budget, you have to understand where the money's coming from because you have federal funds, you have state funds, and you have local funds. So when you're looking at the budget in the school improvement team chair, head of time is blaming that to teachers. Of course, Title I schools get more of the federal money. And then of course, we as schools, we request what we needed on school for the local funds and then that goes to the school board and then they put it in a priority order. So, you know, that's part of it is understanding you can't take money from this fund to pay this fund. So we just, you know, before you can understand and say accountability, you need to understand where the money is coming from.
So part of my problem with the process and the reason for this lack of transparency is because as she said, the individual requests and the school level, so the department requests the principal, principal is simply a simple budget for the school, that goes out of the district, the staff looks at it, the budget committee looks at it, and they only increase the station to the school board. And Washington's Walter over here requests multiple times for a line item budget. And every time they told him, well, we're showing you it's a budget, a bunch of pie charts and an executive summary is a budget, that's not transparency. He was fighting for it. I was in commissioners, commissioners meeting, well, it was a meeting that was set by the county to discuss the budget last week. And I asked them, what kind of disability do they have in the school budget? Can they go down and see what the principals requested that they know how many mop hails particular schools by? And they submitted not, but they did say that on the county level, they do have a similar review of that and along the website. I have looked at it myself, I'm not transparent, I'm not saying it's a good option. But it is a level of transparency we don't have and could maybe replicate this too.
So now we'll move on to the west.
The next question is for Gray Mills. Last night, the school board voted for a county-wide school realignment. The board vote was four to three with several parents and board members expressing dissatisfaction with the consultant's final plan. If you had been on the board last night, how would you have voted? And how can the district better engage impacted families?
I have a lot of opinions about this realignment process and I'm a little angry that it's a tough shot. My, the first reply that went off of me in the very beginning when they set up the focus groups. They had focus groups for the interim staff and they had focus groups from community members. And those consisted of people that were invited by superintendent and some people that chose to, I had a lot of them. So I made a request to the district to see if I could observe those meetings. And I was told those meetings are conducted by the consultant that the firm was hired to assemble the data and that it would not be able. So that was the first reply to me, this was not a transparent process. Months later, a couple of November, they finally released the replant scenario A, B, and C. And scenario C was clearly the plan that they wanted us to take. In fact, when the school board members started looking at these plans, every time somebody suggested they didn't go with plan A, no, 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 that would be a catastrophe. Why didn't you present three plans? Two of them were completely untenable and one of them was a plan C. So this whole process of events, I asked, I asked the consultant if I could see the data from the parent surveys and I was told maybe I could submit a FOIA request to get that explanation. So I had huge problems with this, with this entire process. I'm a school board, I would fight to do it differently. That said, Plan C prioritizes proximity. And I said, I told the consultant from the very beginning that I thought proximity was a main factor for me. And the reason is because when you use proximity to align the schools, those lines don't change so much because you're always looking at who's closest to the school. Those people get to build a community and own that school like we see in our lesson, like we saw at Beverly Hills. And so while I think that making Plan C wasn't a terrible plan and I probably would have approved it, I have major problems, major, major problems with the process and I have a major problem with closing Beverly Hills specifically.
Well, I was at the school board meeting last night and one of the things, and it even run by her too, with the Beverly Hills people there that did not want their school closed. We have forgotten the hierarchy of how this system works. You have parents who are running the show and they elect a school board and then it goes down to the superintendent and then it goes down and they, and last night what I witnessed was that superintendent pretty much told the school board what they would and would not do. And that seems that somebody needs to get in their right position there. So the other thing is that they continually push for new schools instead of fixing the other ones. It would have been $40 million to build a new Beverly Hills school. It would have been $4 million to bring it up to state. That makes no sense in this economy that we have, but they are not looking at the things that make sense. They're looking at an agenda that they already decided to push.
Well, I was for looking at redistricting due to trying to get kids back to their new schools because every time we build a new school, it seems like we ship kids here and we ship kids there. I agree with Laura when they presented three plans, there was not a plan that was there that kept Beverly Hills open. You know, I didn't understand that. All three plans was closing the school. And I understand at the time of that presentation, the contract was under that firm. So you were going to have to extend the contract to get to another plan. You know, at that point, and I was also disappointed that there's a school board member on there who came and filed for her child not to be moved last year, but yet she was willing to vote to move all of these children. And it's also part of our teachers. When you re-alarm, it's kind of scary. You don't know where you're going to go and that was, that's still not made very clear. There's teachers out there worrying about where they will be next year. Thank you.
It was a disappointing vote to me yesterday and I shake my head, if you actually just root and look at the material.
And move area boards. We're talking off-the-wall boards for things like this and it's basically the LGBT community who awards them. So guess how this machine gets moved along? I would like to see a rating system because schools, all of those are digitalized and they could do a digital rating of all these books so that we knew what was in those books, how many violence, how much sex, how much nudity, how much language. You could do a rating and parents could know, but also schools could write a policy for how much that can come in.
If you read the school improvement team plans, it should have a media team on there. And I made sure we had a media team and I was on there, council was on there, your media specialist was on there, we had teachers from grade to grade level, and you should have an administrator on there. And we went through every book that came in that media and we decided as a team if that book stayed there or not. I don't know if that's happening, but the minutes from those teams should be requested and look to have to make sure every school is following that plan of having a media team.
Well, hopefully now that it's still in our school system, if it's a point that every, every single book in our library is in inventory, and I can get used to the minute here and see and look at and see if there's a particular book that's there and notifies. And we do at least now a procedure on evaluating those things and removing them. And there is also a caveat in the college state allows a superintendent to remove something if it's non-educational. So even if, I don't know if he has a calendar to do that, if he doesn't agree with that, if you have four coordinators, I believe it should be removed, you can direct the superintendent to take action.
The next question is for Rob Walter. You have served on the school board for over 11 years and you are asking the voters to support you again. One of the most important issues you believe our school district is facing, and if you are re-elected, how would you like the district to deal with those issues?
Yeah, it is an honor of us to be able to serve for 11 years. We've seen lots of ups and downs, lots of difficult issues. We have, we have, I think that is right now one of our top issues is residents counting, how do we want to deal with that? The district, unfortunately, didn't help terribly, terribly well. My other issues are student cheating, student performance, student behavior. If we can get students engaged and earn, earn more successful. And I think stuff like, things like early college board, it's an opportunity to earn college credit. We have our SIT program that gives them, SIT academies that give them workforce skills, certificates that they can leave the employee. Those things are important. And I feel something, I think it's choice is important. Parents again, whether it's as well, and gates for kids who don't have, excuse me, to the school. Cease to be able to. All right, one other thing I could maybe talk to you about.
This next question is for Captain Ronzmore. Last year, the North Carolina Senate passed Senate Bill 49, the Parents' Bill of Rights. The law requires schools to provide parents with the ability to access curriculum and teaching materials, and it prohibits teaching gender identity and sexuality in eighth and fourth grade. Should the local school board exceed state standards by restricting these materials for middle and high school students as well?
Well, there again, I'm all about what's age appropriate. And I don't feel like some of this material is age appropriate. You know, there again, we're taking away parental rights to how they want to teach this at home. And we as teachers need to be role models too by not expressing our opinions and keeping our opinions to ourselves. But there again, I'm all about parental rights and how they want to raise their children. So now I feel like we've got to look at what's age appropriate for our children.
I don't know why we think that pornographic stuff is age appropriate at all, but that is what. So we're looking at a parent's rights are up through grade four, so you lose them in grade five. That's basically what they're saying. That is, I mean, I don't understand why our legislature stopped at grade four. That was ridiculous. Are you going to just totally give your child to the government and get a grade five? That's stupid. So we need to work on that. And this, well, there, you know, there's, there's just a lot of stuff that needs to be done with the legislature and that's all we need to do is all the way up to the state legislature. Thank you.
The next question is for Amanda Wharton. So any of you can answer it. A search on ZipRecruiter's website lists 155 job openings at Cabarrus County schools. How should the school system address its ongoing shortage not only of educators, but support staff, bus drivers, school nurses, mental health professionals, and other key staff?
This is, this ties into everything that I thought about. When we look at what the schools are doing, they're just doing too much and they're doing a lot of stuff they don't have any business doing. And it creates undue burden on teachers. One of the things I said in the last campaign, and I'm talking about it again in this campaign, is our staff in the district office and in Raleigh DBI, these, these folks are trying to come up with ways to get better outcomes for students. And it's always new programs and new meetings and new trainings. And it's killing teachers and it's taking them away from doing what they love to do. And I believe that if we take our staff and we tell them, your new priority is to look at what teachers are already doing and remove burdens from them. If you want to come to me and talk to the board about this program that you want to add, I want to hear about two programs that you're going to take away. Because once we build a reputation for listening to teachers and taking care of them and removing those burdens from them, we'll create a reputation, we'll become attractive regionally and we'll have more teachers come from Roy County, come from Stanley County, come from Beckinburg County. Our teachers are going to Roy County because they perceive that that is a better environment for them right now. And we need to change that, it's a huge priority for me in this campaign.
Okay, one of the problems is we are not creating an environment for our teachers. I don't, there's not, there's not enough money on the planet to marry a teacher, stay in an abortion. And we've got two teachers to leave classrooms last week in different schools because they couldn't handle the classes. The children, the discipline is horrible in a lot of these schools and we don't hear about it. But if you have your, if you have a child, you know what's going on. So we need to do something about these teachers being able to give feedback all the way to the board instead of having a principal who protects his school record. And if I knew I had a good teaching environment, I would probably take the job. But I'm not going to step into something that I know has been a problem from the get-go and there's no plan to make a difference.
I don't think any teacher went into the profession to be rich because we made it while we're going mad. We aren't professionals and we need to be treated as professionals and respected. It starts with leaders. I worked with one principal for 17 years. I felt respected, I felt supported, I would not have left her school for anything. So we've got to be sure that we're getting good leaders in there and that teachers feel valued and in a good work environment to feel appreciated.
This question is for Robert Coloney. On your campaign cause, you say that you're ready to make Cabarrus County schools right again. What changes are you recommending? Do you support schools giving primary emphasis to teaching basic skills? Or should educators focus on social emotional learning or social activism?
Basic learning is important, no matter what level of education it is. Forty-four percent of the children in North Carolina can't read on grade level. That's a lot. Our teachers, sorry, I got off track. So implementing new technology, I mean, this is the 21st century. And kids can't, we can't write our names in cursive. We're not teaching. Curriculum, we don't have a lot to say on that here locally. But... The more resources that teachers have to get, better we can prepare our students.
Okay, now we'll move on to our third round of questions in our final round.
This question is for Catherine Bonsmore. Last night, the school board established a new realignment plan that requires a comprehensive 10-year facilities master plan. Our leaders are talking about a $1 billion budget in order to fund school construction. Last week, the board noted to close two community-based Title I schools to rebuild one larger school. The proposed facility plan calls for three new elementary schools and a high school and replacing two existing high schools. What would your recommendation be to fund the budget outlined in the construction and deferred maintenance plan for the school system?
Well, first, I'm not sure I agree with the 10-year plan. You know, I agree with Rob last night. Our areas that we need help in is Coxneal, ODL area, but yet they're putting the new Northwest High School down in the, I think, below the five-year plan, which we could get the new high school built and shift students that would help with the elementary. You know, when you hire a firm, firms can come back and recommend all their schools. I've worked at the ODL for 15, almost 20 years. We loved that school. We loved it. We did not want a new school. We kept getting moved down because teachers didn't complain about it. ODL had personality. I think we need to look at where we can cut. I mean, a billion dollars sounds like a lot. I'm not really for bond, because the bond can't go on the ballot until 2026. We don't know what the interest rate will be in 2026. A lot of that depends on the president. And now with all of our tax forms coming, you know, do we want more of a tax increase? You know, a lot of these schools, I mean, the ODL Elementary School and the DeRon Brown MacAllister School is being built with wings, and I was told by the architects, I was on the design team for the ODL schools, that we could knock the end of the wing off and extend the wings because we had the land there to do. So, I think we need to go back to the drop-in board and look at where can we cut local money out. We're getting more and more directors, administrators at that county office that's being paid by local funds. But we need to look at other alternatives, in my opinion, to where can we cut the state money.
The 10-year plan at this point is just a draft, it's not a real, it's not a vote on. But what is in there is a $11 million to buy a building preschool that does absolutely nothing for adding seats to our Rowan County. That's frustrating. And then where they do have the schools, they're planning the schools, they're on the own consultant when you look at the forecast of growth, there's not enough growth there to accommodate a school, a seed school. So, there's lots of issues with that plan as well. I think we need to be addressing where the growth begins, depending on the schools that we actually have, some people will have to be shifted all the way out of county to attend to school, and they can attend to a local school. That's important, and we need to fight through that. And then, as a species, it's not going to be the same in 10 years from now. Are we going to need the same, are people, I mean, do they have to go to school every five, five days a week, or four days a week? That's occasionally happening also. So, there's other options out of, out of, out of box, I'm looking.
One of the questions that gets asked most often is what happened to our education lottery, because this was supposed to pay for new schools, right? So, I looked it up, in 2022, the Cabarrus County allotment was 15.6 million. If you do the math, that will bill one school, because they're averaging a new school at $40 million. So, as things got broken down, and you can go online and of course look at the education lottery, in 2005, when it was originally started, it was 40% was to go to schools. But in 2012, it was capped at 100, at 900 million, at 100 million. So, it's more like 17%. They tend, they play with these things, and Governor Perdue, the first year was then she just walked from it anyway. So, we need a whole overhaul of this lottery system and find out where this money is, but it's not going to schools.
West Cabarrus High School is a beautiful school, isn't it?
I think so.
I think it's a very nice building. And we look at the Burt Road Middle School, a lot of the amenities that we see here at West Cabarrus are repeated at Burt Road. And we look at, we look at Bar Brown MacAllister, and they start projecting where they're going to build new schools. You'll see in school board meetings, they take that Bar Brown MacAllister plan and say, "No, that won't fit at Beverly Hills, but yeah, it will fit at Coltrane Web. And yes, it will fit, it's probably below where you already purchased in Parisburg." So, in a way, I'm kind of glad that prior boards already did this experiment for us. Now, we have an opportunity as the next board to look at these new schools that they've built and compare them to similar populations, and say, "Are the students getting better outcomes from these facilities? And if they're not, then we don't have a justification to keep building these same types of facilities. We can look for areas to cut and spend our money more efficiently."
This next question is for Amanda Wharton. So, any candidate can answer. Should law enforcement officers be available at schools in addition to school resource Do you feel that our schools are safe, and what other safety mechanisms do you recommend for the district?
I can say that working in a different district full-time, Cabarrus County schools is one of the safest school districts that I've ever been in in my life. Far above other districts in our state, and that's a good thing. The reason is that I've always looked for improvement. Crime is up across the state, in our schools, especially our high schools. Cabarrus County is no different. We went from 91 crimes, reported crimes, in our high schools in '21, '22, to 129 last year. Total of all schools in '21, '22 was 181, and it went up to 209. So, it's not a significant increase, but it's definitely an increase. And we only seen probably an increase of a couple of thousand students across the whole district. Like I said, there's always room for improvement, and we should be thankful that we do have a resource officer in every single school. And I think we have one serving in early college when those kids get out at night, because it's dark when they get out. I've served in a district that, we don't have a resource officer in every school. We have one that shares six elementary students, and it's terrible. It's terrible. And hopefully that changes, but you thank our Concord Police and our Sheriff's Department for doing the job that they do.
I'm also very thankful to the Sheriff's Office, to Van Shaw, and to the city police for providing us with those officers. You know, we as teachers pray every day, every morning for our students, but the one thing, every school has a crisis management team, and I was part of those teams, and we just started to train and train teachers for, you know, crisis management. We learn from every incident that happens in the United States, and then we sit down and we evaluate every time we have drills. And we try to do drills every quarter in our schools to prepare, to prepare children for what happens, and hopefully, we will never have to do it for real. We've had several odd days, and we've, again, our children have done very well, but just keep us on, we need to just keep on our schools and pray that our children do stay safe.
And we have quit the 80 dollars of the school safety, since I've got to afford these big things together. Commissioners as well, as the local bodies are paying for the sheriffs and police to add in all schools. We have best to do, we've installed all those, upgraded the camera systems, we've upgraded the key systems, we have background checks, we have metal detectors, we have all kinds of things that are focused on the safety. But we still work to, you know, do work on the internal stuff too. And that's where a lot of the fear I have, you know, making things out of control. You've got mental health issues with the students, and you've got protecting child trafficking games. I mean, those are the things that we're looking at as far as increasing school board safety.
Here's something that I've learned from Donald Trump. When he was campaigning on building a wall, I thought it was going to be six foot thick, marble and gold, and I thought, just outrage. But what he did was, he went and talked to border agents, and he said, "What do you need?" He said, "We need to be able to see through it." Something more like a fence. "All right, what do you need it? We need it in these areas where we have trouble with border crossings." So, he consulted the experts, and that's what I would like to do too. I spent a couple of hours talking with someone that I think is a school security expert. I talked to him about metal detectors, and he said, "It's helpful, but it creates a logistic problem. If you're going to try to put every kid through there, and they're all arriving at the school at the same time, it's going to keep them from getting to homeroom on time. And if you don't put every kid through it, if you randomly pull buses, then it's still kind of a poor system." "So, what do you recommend?" He said, "The number one thing that makes our job easier is just implemented clear backpacks." And that's what you get from talking to the experts. He also said very specifically that when we get these see something, see say something alerts in the middle of the night, it can be difficult to access the information on that particular student that is housed in the district office. So, we need to streamline that system so that the officers and the counselors know who they're dealing with, and they can resolve that situation before they interrupt the schooling.
The next question is for Bubba Hartzell. Most of the time, if a child is identified as having a disability, parents will need to rely on a public school for his or her education. An individual education plan, or IDP, as part of federally mandated standards, can be stressful for parents, educators, and the student. How can the school system better facilitate achieving the goals at one in each student's IDP?
Well, it falls on the teacher and the parent. Each student with IDP has goals, yearly goals, they have IDP even once a year, and they have goals, and they have to do those goals in more than weekly. Usually, a couple of times a week, they work on certain goals that they have. They meet those goals, they have a revale, they go, and they update those goals to make it better. But it falls on the classroom teacher, and following up, it falls on our curriculum coaches and administrators to make sure those things are being followed out.
This question is for Melanie Freeman. How do you assess how the current and prior school boards handle the COVID-19 heat pandemic? What lessons did our school district learn from the pandemic? And how can the district help students who are still struggling with learning losses associated with remote learning and school closures?
Okay, first of all, this was a planned pandemic, and we all know that. We had, we were told to follow the science, but we did not follow the science. We had, we listened to one man in Washington instead of the multiple voices of other experts. We listened to the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and that was a huge mistake. So, I think if we, and we will face this even, we need to know that the school board is going to make a decision locally, not the consensus pushing from the government and from the feds and things like that. I think they need to, we know that they always have fear, and we, that's a certain tip off there for me if they start doing that. I don't like the virtual teaching. That was probably the biggest mistake that we made, along with the masking, and that we know that just put everybody in the hole further than they already were. The masking really hurt our EC students, and the virtual learning too was a disaster. So, all those decisions, and hopefully they have learned from those, and we won't do that again. That will be, obviously, we can get better decisions today.
The next question is for Rob Walter. Should a school board or its administration review or restrict curriculum for any supporting instruction materials, or individual lesson plans, or, quote, supplemental materials, end quote, with a focus on colludively charged content such as social justice, gender identity, or gender dysphoria to be utilized by instructional staff in their classrooms?
Well, absolutely, we should have a review process, see what goes in front of our kids before it goes in front of our kids. I think the most important part of that is, the school board has thousands of policies. So, the school, as a team here, as a board, set what the policy is, and the policy has restrictions on that. Everybody down the line, from teachers to administrators to school principals have to follow that policy. So, I think that's critical that we have like-minded folks on the school board that can make sure our policies are worthy of dignity.
The counseling for the dysphoria count is right, and therefore, we counsel towards what the child wants. It does not have any truth basis to it or fact basis to it. And a lot of this is going to happen in middle school, when the hormones and everything are all unregulated. What we need are clear heads of people that would, and it makes no sense to me to tell a child, "You're wrong, you're very wrong." That makes no sense to me. Why would you not affirm a child for the way God has made them? And help them get through these tough years, because of the dysphoria, just two years later. And quite frankly, dysphoria was introduced to me because you don't wake up in the morning and ask those questions, "Am I right, or am I wrong?" Somebody introduces that idea to me.
This is the final question tonight. Mr. Greg Mills, do you support the General Assembly acting to prohibit media specialists from placing physical or digital materials with sexually graphic images or materials focused on gender dysphoria and same-sex same content in public and charged libraries? Or should the issue continue to be governed at the local school board level? Or should the issue continue to be governed at the local school board level?
Yeah, I know this is a major concern, but I really don't think it should be. This is a really short answer. There should not be pornography in the school.
Period. Period.
I would like to say that we can trust our media specialists. I think that if, if a news crew has to show up at our school board, then the school board's already failed. We should have been more proactive about this stuff at the beginning. There is a formal review process for books and police materials, and it's way too cumbersome. It's no wonder that parents can skip all that and go straight to the school board. As a school board member, if those processes aren't working, I can tell you that I will go to the principal in the individual school. I will alert them to the book, and I will simply ask them a question. Do you think this book is worth fighting for? Because if it's not worth fighting for, if it's pornographic, I have a feeling, I have an inclination, most principals don't want to fight, and they're just going to get the book out. I think a lot of books have already been moved that way because they see controversy and difference that they don't want. So I'm going to go straight to the principal and say, decide whether or not you want to fight over this book, because it's coming. And you can cut it off right now before it's a problem, work on a viral moment for all of us.
All right. So that is the end.
I hope this staff, if you want to say anything, if you have anything else to say. And we really did it with the teaching, the staffing crisis too, D and D, really it's a huge issue. If you're concerned about remote learning and how that impacted your students during COVID, they might be remote learning right now. We can't hire enough teachers in, especially in the AP classes in high school. So you may think, you have a classroom teacher, you may have a teacher assistant sitting in your room for the students who are logging into a single, single system remote learning session at another school. This problem has gotten so bad that some districts are even sharing teachers with other districts because they can't hire a calculus teacher anywhere in their county. And then we had our school board, recently, the district staff came up to them and presented an idea, three classrooms, we've got an uncertified teacher. Here's a great idea, we're going to put an uncertified teacher over the three classrooms. We'll put assistant teacher in one room, we'll put any teacher in another room, and yes, employ all of those teachers, all of those students who can have access to that highly qualified teacher. So it's ideal, we would need to have a highly qualified teacher in every one of those classrooms. And that's a great idea.
I want to make one comment about the books. Each book comes to us with an age appropriate on there. I don't know who sets the age appropriate level for a book. I don't know if it's the publishing company, the author, who. But we've got to be careful about that because that is just one person's opinion of what is age appropriate. And that's why it's so important for every school to have a committee to go through these books that knows that grade level and can decide, is this age on this book really appropriate for that age group?
And we do have examples with staffing teachers. And as big as you, because we've got over 12 percent turnover, who've got replacements plus the ones that were shorter. And how to create ideas, and you all have ideas, you need to share that with the board. The public needs to share that. The other big part is, this is all about funding too. The county pays us $20 million of the year history teacher subsidies. And back to work, guys, we've got to hire partners. So we've got to ask that too. As well, is it, hey, can track our teachers? Or is it, or are your workloads making it easy for teachers? I think we need to focus on our officers. All right, so that's the end of our questions. So first of all, I just want to take a second before we do our closing statements, this is Kim Ramon Ross, because I think, the whole three debates, the school question, the top. So, and I want to take a second to address the fact, I think the debates this year have been great. We've had every single candidate show up this year too. One of them did not show tonight. Well, I've already had a text sent to me where she's already put a statement on Facebook where she had to go to another event, and she was unable to be here because she chose to attend another event. In my opinion, she just missed the most important event of this election cycle. And if she's serious about being a Republican elected official, she should be sitting at seat right there taking the questions like the rest of them did. And one thing I want to call people's attention about Amanda Orpens, as the chairman of the Republican Party, I feel that also someone has the protector of the Republican Party. Last cycle, Amanda Orpens' husband ran for county commissioner as a Republican. Shortly after he won as a Republican, after he used our resources, our money, our signs, our handouts, everything, he left the Republican Party. I had a concern about that with Amanda Orpens. And I wish she would have been here tonight to answer questions on whether is that her plan, if she gets elected as a Republican. So now we're going to move on to the closing statements from our candidates. I'm going to start with the right, so Bubba Harson will be our first person, and you come up with your closing statement.
Well, a lot of my members have asked me a couple of questions earlier, but it is what it is. I don't consider myself a politician, I'm a public servant every day. Our children are the future of our community. I believe that we need to ensure that our schools are the safest, the best for academic growth, and are being led properly for current and future generations, for students, teachers, and staff. I hope that I can earn your vote and serve this board and serve the people of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Well, if you know me, you know my passion for children. I have dedicated my entire career and act to, to advocate for our children. In 2015, I was awarded the Impact Through Education Award from the school board for my service at O'Dell with working with families with diarrhea. I know this county, I know this school system, and all of that's going to benefit me as a board member. I have been a parent, I have been a volunteer for Mental Health of America, and I, again, I now have a business advocating for children, and I want to continue that as a school board member. And thank you again for coming out tonight.
Thank you for coming tonight. We live in a town where our government has put a target on the backs of Christians. Christian teachers cannot openly speak with their faith in the classroom, but a teacher can tell the children all about the LGBT lifestyle and give them pornographic books to demonstrate it. We have a system in the states where all about the children, whether Hitler could have said the same. We have a big field of candidates for school board to Washington. If you choose to elect me, you know that we must have white-minded people in every office. Do they want to defend you or abuse you? Is there political gain for them or will it cost them? I'm not sure anyone would describe me as a fighter, but I'm sure they would tell you I'm a defender. I defend children, I defend the truth, and I defend biblical values. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's very important, we started running in, and I hope that you feel very good about the candidates that you have available to you. I think all of us are very passionate about our schools, about our children, and obviously everyone here is well-formed. This is not enough time to get into all the issues that are surrounding our schools. So I want to continue that conversation with you. I'll be in lobby tonight. I'll also be at Rocket River Coffee in Harrisburg from 6 to 8 on Thursday. By the way, Thursday is beginning early. And I would like for you to go to reddills.com and scroll down to the bottom and check out the social media links. Facebook is the best place to get constant updates from the campaign. Just want to keep that conversation going, and I appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
I have a prayer for you to go ask the God that I can, he can use me to serve our community. Answer that prayer, and be blessed to be able to serve, use my gifts, the Cabarrus County School Board for the last two hundred years. I'm passionate about adding the parry voice in school board, I'm passionate about engaging kids in their own education. I'm passionate about keeping liberal intent out of our public school systems and voted that way numerous times. I'm passionate about transparency and collaboration. A quote that's close to me is, none of us are as smart as all of us. So I think your wisdom is valuable, I appreciate people when they share it. I give you my best to this supportive role, and I know the school system is better today than it is my constitution. I'm not perfect, but I am present, I am engaged, I am compassionate, I am consistent. I'm not an expert in marketing slogans or asking for help, so I'll leave it at this. I'm Rob Walter, candidate for school board. I don't need your money, but I do want your prayers, and please be generous. God bless you. So that is, that concludes our school board debate tonight. So can we give our candidates a round of applause? I just want to take a step to thank you also, because school board is not as glorious as county commissioner and state house, but when you have a school real life, and you've got 500 parents showing up, it's not an easy job. So we appreciate you guys getting involved. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who come out for our debates this year, it's been a successful debate season. I'm a debate guy, I'm just chairman of the Republican Party, I always like to have debates, but I like to have a panel of people also to make them worth happening. So appreciate everybody ahead, appreciate Jennifer, Molly Reed, our question folks, and Tom Douse is my, and we will see you at the polls starting Thursday.